Presentation from our Chief of Police. Do you want to take it away?
Thank you, Tim, and everyone for the opportunity to present this evening. David Valentine, the Police Chief here. And along with me on the line here is my Budget Manager, Robert Carroll. By way of introduction, since we went around the table, I've been with the city for thirty years. My experience in Santa Ana extends beyond fifty-one years. So I have been asked to present an update on the impact of Measure X on police services. I don't know who's controlling this PowerPoint personally, is it?
Yeah, we'll do it here. If you want to just tell us when to advance.
Okay. Do you want to?
Advance.
Put it into PowerPoint mode.
There you go.
Put it down at the bottom there, the thing that almost looks like a cup.
Where you can hit F five.
Hold on one moment.
That's old school, Robert. You showed your age.
One moment, we're having a little bit of technical difficulty here. So can you advance?
Beautiful. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
All right. So let me first start off by restating in part the purpose of Measure X, and that's to maintain effective nine-one-one response, or emergency response, as it were, retaining firefighters and police officers addressing homelessness, making streets maintain parks, youth, and senior services, and under strict general revenue purposes. And so that's directly from the measure as titled. So back on September eleventh, the Police Department did in fact present to this committee and identified two primary goals. First, to improve police officer hiring and retention, and then the second, to reduce response times to calls for service. Go ahead and switch. So on the first one, a little bit of background beyond the slide. Recruiting highly qualified police officers, and that's all we're looking for here, is a task. And when we elevate the standards, which in fact is what we did back in 2017, it's even that much more difficult. So the historical is we found ourselves hiring some positions and we really could not keep up with attrition. So you hire twenty or thirty, but twenty-five, thirty-five leap in that same calendar year. So your net gain is not much. So we went through that kind of a YOY effect for quite some time. So in 2018, what we did was really reset the recruitment strategy, strategic plan comprehensive, reset the command staff that oversees that function as well. And we went into areas that we had not before, as simple as overlooking our community college in our backyard. I'm a product of that institution, and so I know that there are young people there that have questions and maybe are interested in exploring, not even necessarily being a police officer, but any opportunity in the Police Department. So we sent people into the hallways of the campus to have general conversations, of course, we get all the traditional recruitment events and that, military institutions. And then we embarked on a brand new initiative. We tied that into a five-year strategic plan. The goal number five is inside to recruit brands and succession plan our Police Department. Again, as part of background, when I took over as the Chief in 2017, I inherited sixty-seven police officer vacancies, sixty-seven percent. That is significant for our city and the operational tempo at which we respond to. And so we set back strategy, put a plan in place, so that pretty much took all of eighteen and really nineteen, we really got to work, established the goal of hiring fifty police officers in calendar year 2019. I will tell you that I researched records at City Hall, City Personnel, and they only go back twenty years, but we have not hired fifty police officers in over twenty years in one calendar year in the city. So we achieved that goal. Go ahead and switch. Twenty nineteen, you see fifty police officers hired. It's broken down by recruits. These are candidates that actually have to go to a six-and-a-half-month academy before we actually see them back at the Police Department to get into the training phase. And then lateral police officers, we hired ten of those, they come from other police agencies and they can go directly into the training program. And then one academy grad, and that would have consisted of someone who had either put themselves through the academy or with another agency, and for whatever reason separated and deployed there, and then we picked them up. So in that same year, we had eleven police officers of separate employment, retirement, and other reasons. And so our net increase you see is thirty-nine. That becomes relevant here in the next slide. Next slide, please. So the table here shows an illustration of a seven-year history here. And you see that, you know, as I was mentioning, over the years, it really just came down to how many officers you hired and then actually how many separated employment. We did have a lower year in 2019, as you see, there was only eleven that separated. And so you may ask yourself, well, why is that? It has to do with hiring cycles, age of our workforce, and then retention as well. There is a typo on this slide of retention two. It was corrected, submitted, and for whatever reason could not be uploaded. From 2014 to 2018, that should be eighteen, not nineteen, the net gain, when you back out all of the separations, was five. So for four years there, we really only saw five additional police officers out of the roadway. Fast forward to 2019, backing out the eleven that separated employment, you saw an increase of thirty-nine. Slide please. The other goal is the reduction of response times to our priority calls for service. This is the highest priority that was identified in our strategic plan. The strategic plan is available on the website at a couple of different points, the Police Department website. It's, I draw your attention there, it's the first time that we actually went out to the community and got input from community members and incorporated those into our strategic plan, co-facilitated along with the Orange County Human Relations Commission. Okay, so next slide, please. So response times, we have five different priority levels that are identified, that are categorized based on the information that our dispatch receives, and then dispatches officers accordingly. The first one is Priority One, is the highest priority, is immediate threat to life. And then Priority Two threatens the safety of citizens or serious crimes that are in progress or have just occurred, urgent in nature. Priority One and Two calls are dispatched immediately to any available unit. We do have four police in districts, but these calls, really the dispatcher is expected to find any available unit in the city and begin to dispatch them. Next slide. The next three priorities are in fact lower priorities as you read there, all the way down to number five, which is lowest priority, non-urgent, administrative in nature, parking problems, et cetera. I will add that obviously during this unprecedented pandemic, that really, well, it started in 2019, but really, as we began to deal with it here locally in March, so for the past seven months of 2020, we have been operating under this additional requirement for CDC guidelines, making sure that we keep our workforce safe. And so on Priority Number Four and Five calls for service, for example, whenever possible, we did shift to handling those over the phone if possible, online reporting as well. So it was an alternative police response, because we still very much needed to be present and handle all those nine-one-one calls for service. We receive on average about thirteen thousand calls for service per month. And so when you compare that to other cities where we are extremely busy, but again, with COVID, we did have to make adjustments. I will also share with this group that proudly, we, many police departments here in our county and across the region and the country, pulled resources inward and away from the community. We did the opposite. And so what does that mean? So if you recall, when the pandemic first hit, and we had to make all adjustments on the immediate shutdown, various departments sent all of their detectives home to work from home completely, and they split their department in half, and we only had half of what was previously assigned to frontline policing at any given time. The other thing that occurred was various departments were directed to not engage in proactive enforcement. So imagine that for a moment, you have police executives directing their department to not proactively engage in providing public safety, right? You're still responding to nine-one-one calls, but you're not actively looking to respond to, mitigate, and in some instances, prevent crime, specifically violent crime. That's not what occurred here in our city. Next slide. So response times, you'll see here, and we are still currently in a assessment phase, looking at our five response priorities, and looking to see where we can make adjustments. What has happened across the country also is some of the shifts and changes in policing we may find may be permanent, even as we come out of this pandemic next year sometime hopefully, or sooner. But what you see here is a reduction in response times overall, twenty-four percent. You see it broken down here by priority, averaged from 2018, 2019, and year-to-date in 2020. So in 2018, with nine-one-one, life and immediate danger on average was about eight minutes, eleven seconds. Fast forward, we're at six minutes, five, six minutes, five seconds on the response. Now, part of this also factors in that early on in the pandemic, a lot less cars on the roadway, and so we were able to get from point A to point B much quicker. But we evaluate these response times on a weekly basis and then on a monthly basis, and they have stayed pretty steady and trended pretty consistently. So we'll continue to monitor this and see if any other changes need to be made. Direct correlation here with the support of Measure X to staff the Police Department appropriately. Next slide. So that's it, I guess. I will take any questions, and again, Robert Carroll, who's my Budget Manager, is on the line as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Chief Valentine, for that update, especially with regards to response times and so on and so forth. At this time, you're okay on answering some questions, and assuming that you might have some questions for us, for the Chief and/or the finance staff. So let's go ahead and open it up to the members that would like to ask a question, or two, or three.
This is Commissioner Leo. Good evening, Chief.
How are you doing, Chris?
Good. Two questions. The first one is, one of the questions that came up when your staff came and presented the first time was, we grappled with a standard response time and what the goal was to get to. And it's an open question for you, is, is there a standard time that you're looking for? And if you are able to hire additional officers, could you get to that standard?
Great question.
That's one question.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's one question. The second question is, we hear a lot about the fact that for a city our size, we have less police per capita than other cities. And I'm wondering if you can answer that question? I've heard us compared to L.A., I've heard us compared to other cities. If you can answer those two questions for me, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Thank you for the questions. So standard in policing and response times, there is no hard and fast time established. We want to, we strive to get to particularly nine-one-one, highest priority calls as quickly as possible. So it's six minutes, it's over six minutes right now, we want to get to five. We get to five, we want to get to four, and so on. Every second that goes by when we're talking about a nine-one-one threat to life is significant, and it can mean the difference between life and death. So there's no hard and fast standard time. We want to lower that as much as possible and continue to drive in that direction. There are staffing models that agencies throughout the country look at, and you essentially enter various variables that can be set by community members, by this group, by police staff, and saying, what is a reasonable time? What is our target? Let's say five minutes. So what will it take to get to that Priority One call in five minutes in most every instance? And then you enter data such as, you know, the population of our city, the miles, the square miles, time of day, all these factors, and out comes an equation as to how many officers you would need to meet that goal. There are those metrics that various universities partner with police agencies to do, and so that's available. But always, you know, from my perspective, is we've lowered it, we want to continue to lower it, right? So that's a, so the second question, great question again, so we, there's a metric that is used, and that's the Western states, which is California, Nevada, Arizona, all the Western states. The average of those states is one-point-eight police officer per thousand, one-point-eight, right? So prior to, you know, this huge recruitment effort, when we were at, you know, sixty-seven vacancies, we were in the area of about point oh-eight per thousand in the city, half of what we should be at, right? So fast forward, we're up to three-hundred-and-sixty-six officers today. We were hovering at about one-point-one, one-point-two. The one-point-eight ratio, if you extrapolate that to our documented residents in our city, and I think the last time I checked, we were north of like six-hundred officers on that staffing model. So LAPD, you mentioned, if they're not north of two-point-oh officers per thousand, they're pretty darn near. So we, we're very lean, and we are able to accomplish, you know, the policing mission. If we had additional officers, then obviously we could do more and lower those response times.
Thank you.
A member, Carol, goes in here. I do have one question. Since retention was one of the goals of Measure X, I was wondering where we are compared to other agencies in Orange County on the salaries and benefits scale, and if we are still at risk of our officers leaving to go to other agencies, or if we're in the higher part of the scale and can retain them?
Yes, thank you, Lord. We appreciate that question, another great question. So we are currently at the higher level in terms of pay and compensation, when you compare to other agencies like size, population, activity level, we take into effect all those factors. But, you know, I will say, pay and benefits is just one factor, right? It's also about the standing of the organization, the organizational tempo, and the reputation of the agency. So I mentioned in 2017, when I took over, you know, with an excess of fourteen percent vacancy rate in the sworn ranks alone, you know, you could go to a roll call, and this is where officers get together before they actually go out in the street, and there would be six police officers, you know, six police officers for the city on a cover watch, entirely unacceptable, not a special morale, right? So fast forward, with the hiring that is supported, and leadership, I can't overstate the importance of good, sound leadership, and holding officers accountable and supporting officers, which is what we do today, we're not at risk of a retention factor of concern. In fact, we have more highly qualified candidates than positions available at this point. That is not the case with many agencies even in Orange County, but certainly beyond across Thank you.
Excellent, Chief. I'm going to step in here, this is, and I have a couple more data-driven questions, and then a couple philosophical ones, but I'm going to hit you up with the data ones first. You kind of mentioned that, you know, obviously it's always a struggle between the recruiting and then the separation. And with regards to our age of our force, is our average age, maybe if you have an idea of what the average age is now versus the average age a few years ago, and going by anticipating, you know, separations being a larger and larger issue going forward also?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the question. So we do have a very young workforce, particularly in the frontline policing area, and that's true across the industry. We do look at, you know, the, really, the metric there would be the age of our police officers and then their years of service. So you're getting near the age of fifty for those classic retirement officers, and then if you're near thirty years of service, that's usually the two for combination in terms of when people are looking at retirement. So we take a look at that regularly. This next year, this 2020, this is now, you know, this is pre-COVID, we'll have to see what that factor looks like in an overlay. We were estimating, again, really a lower number, fifteen to twenty or so, that's just really a guesstimate, because it's also a hard data point to obtain and validate, right? Because we actually have to ask, you know, volunteer information when it comes to this. We have to ask officers in the next year, the next three years, you know, thirty-six months, and the next whatever it is, are you planning on retiring, yes or no? And, you know, people sometimes aren't willing to offer that information for whatever reason. It's personal to them, and that's okay. So we look at age and then time on the job, and what it tells us is, again, really, not much of a concern there when it comes to retention and a mass exodus. I will say that because of everything, all the factors that are impacting policing today and moving forward, that is a factor, that is a huge factor in other communities, not here. And I think it's because of the work that we've put in on the front end, and again, with support from the city, has brought us to where we are today.
Okay, very good. And, you know, from looking at your Table B, which is the seven-year hiring, so, you know, we kind of, you know, the big number that we, everyone, you know, kind of knew about and you were striving for was that fifty hires, and so we're at net thirty-nine for nineteen, net eight, so forty-seven. So do we still, do we have, maybe in my terminology, three funded yet unbilled positions that you're still trying to hire for, or is it more, or is it frozen because of COVID at those levels right now? So we're kind of...
Yeah, so there's no freezing police officer positions, if any ways, they're all with others. We are funded to three-hundred-and-sixty-six police officer positions, that's what we are funded to. And so we, in fact, I have a swearing-in ceremony Monday, this Monday coming up, for three officers, and that brings us to three-sixty-six.
Okay.
And then in addition to that, this past year, we were awarded a Department of Justice Topps Hiring Grant. We had been out of that load cycle for four years, and so we were able to secure ten additional police officer positions through the hiring grant, of course, with the match by the city. So those are the positions now that we're focusing on hiring moving forward, and again, continuing to meet our attrition rates at the same time.
Okay, so I'm going to restate that in my terms and hopefully write it down, right? So we're at the three-sixty-six, you know, starting on Monday, which is the, but then there's an additional ten through a grant that you're still seeking out, it might be specialized people, but specialized officers, but there's another ten that hopefully you'll be looking to fill, is that right?
Yeah. The ten, the authorization for those ten is secured, it's confirmed. So now we need to, as we move forward, hire those positions. And they won't all be hired overnight, obviously, but we have a strategy in place and to hire those positions as well. So we'll be at three-sixty-six, right?
Right. In terms of, well, how long are those, I mean, usually with grants, those only last for a certain time, certain, are those like one-year funding positions, two-years?
So we, Robert, can you chime in here on our, we have to hire them for the period, and then how much longer do we have to keep them? Of course, we're not going to let them go.
Right, 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 yeah. Well, the year grant, the grant will fund them for the first three years, then after the grant ends, we have to keep them for an additional year.
That's right.
And as the Chief mentioned, we'll have no plans on letting any of these guys go. They'll be employed as long as, you know, as long as we can, definitely. Okay, perfect. So we essentially have three years of grant money, and then we're funding internally through the city. And then in terms of switching over to response times, Chief, so this is very encouraging on the response times, congratulations on that. You know, I think as member Leo was implying, you know, I think most of us are kind of in positions that we kind of, you know, put out a, especially a lot of us there in finance, you know, we put a raw number out trying to achieve, but that's just not how policing works, is that you're always trying to get better, but there's not like an internal like goal of, hey, guys, if we get this, then we met our goal for this year?
Well, so in terms of response time, as I mentioned... Well, uh, so, in terms of, of response time, as I, as I mentioned, with priority one, year-to-date, on average, we're at six oh five, so if we establish, you know, five-thirty is, is our response time, we, we, we've already set goals and, and obviously worked towards those. Um, this, um, this, this is, uh, uh, also, once again, a, a unique, uh, piece because of the pandemic. Um, we, we don't know, we simply don't know, and even with this, you know, this, this measurable metric, um, studies that, that we can access and engage in, they, they, they cannot tell you today that, um, you know, what the true impact would be of the pandemic when it comes to traffic on the roadway, um, urgency calls for service, domestic violence that occurs at an increasing rate at homes, et cetera, all, all those factors. Um, to answer your question, um, you know, our, our goal would be to drive each and every one of these priority, uh, response times, uh, down. That, that's, that's our goal, okay?
Yeah, fair enough. Um, and then you mentioned alternative, um, police responses, such as, um, you know, forming internet reports, um, become probably priority four, uh, type, uh, type calls. How, how is, how does that come into play in terms of response time? If I have a, you know, like, I get spoken into and a call, you know, I get pushed to the, um, to the internet, you know, to make the online report? Like, how does something like that come into play in response time?
So, um, if, if, for example, we have a burglary, uh, it's a, and it's a cold call, in other words, it occurred some time ago from, from discovery to actually notifying the police department, and there's no, um, suspect information that is known, uh, at the time, rather than have that call pinned in our queue, um, cause that, that tolls, right? All that time is tolling, and it, and it, and it measures, uh, against our, our response time. Um, maybe one of our telephonic reporting unit, uh, members can, can handle that, a call for service over the phone, um, take the police report, issue a, a crime incident, uh, report, be it for insurance or what have you, and then we could track it and assign it to investigations thereafter if there is in fact, um, any investigative follow-up. But, that's just one example. I, I was sure with you, you know, again, uh, during, during COVID, everything is kind of a disclaimer here, right? So the police academies closed, they closed, they didn't want outbreaks, uh, you know, the state closed things down, and so what, you know, we had, because of our hiring surge, we had, you know, twenty or thirty, uh, recruits at various levels in the police academy, they run a, a freshman, kind of college freshman, sophomore, junior, senior classes, all of those, uh, folks had to come back to the police department for, for, you know, a, a, a couple of months. And so what do, what do you do with those folks? You could, you can continue to train them, and, and we did, uh, so that they wouldn't lose what they already learned, when they get back down, they can pick up the ball, keep going. But in part, what we did was we assigned those, um, uh, cadets, recruits at that point, uh, some of them to our telephonic reporting unit, so they can take phone calls under the guidance of a supervisor, obviously, because they're still not a sworn peace officer. But we were able to provide alternative services to, again, um, assist in driving down these response times, to appropriate calls that could be, um, um, mitigated and handled over the phone, does that make sense?
Yeah, so I'm, well, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out, like, hey, if I, if I, you know, and, and I'm not questioning that that's not the right thing to do, I'm just questioning how that comes into play in terms of the, um, the, the call response time?
Mm-hmm.
So like, if, you know, if, uh, you know, if I submitted an online incident report, or I just give the information, just quickly over the phone, is that essentially like a five-minute, you know, does that count as a, like, a five-minute response because it's done so quick for that priority four call?
Well, it, it depends.
Or it is from, from, because, you know, someone didn't really go out to the call.
No, 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 it's all, it's all factored in, yeah, it, it's, it's, it's all factored in. The other thing, you know, this, this kind of this misnomer of, well, no one, no one ever came.
Right, and that's where I'm kind of going.
Yeah.
You can tell that...
Yeah, that, that can't be the case, and, and I, and I talk to community members about this, um, you know, frequently, um, in, in that, um, maybe there is a call for service and it, and it stays in queue, uh, and it does require an actual police officer to respond at the scene, and because we're busy with other issues throughout the city, um, you know, that, that, that response is delayed, um, but we cannot, we cannot remove the call, um, from, from, from our, our, our service protocol. That, it has to be cleared by an officer, if that's what it requires, a police response, or a sergeant. Um, so some of this alternative response also, uh, involved, um, you know, pick, because of COVID, not wanting to make in-person contact, there's supervisors out in the field who are encouraged to pick up the phone and call, right? And say, okay, um, this verbal disagreement that you had with, you know, whoever, um, what are the issues? Um, and then assess if there's actually any policing, uh, um, factors or matters that need, that need to be addressed by the police, you know? The other thing, that, that's part of the, you know, kind of the, the narrative here is, you know, what fits under police, uh, responsibility, and then there's kind of everything else, right? So that alternative response is, is kind of meshed in here, if you will.
So, so, I mean, and, and where I guess I'm kind of driving is that, you know, because I mean, you know, we, we all live in neighborhoods, and, I mean, you, you live in a neighborhood also, um, and so, I mean, I, you know, I hear my neighbor say, you know, just like you said, oh, they never showed up, and it's like, well, I know they have to show up, it may not be in the, you know, you know, it's not a priority one call, you know, so I'm not gonna expect them to come, you know, live in violence. Um, so, you know, does, you know, because I know that, you know, so many of these are probably alternative police responses, um, that need it, like, so does that, you know, do those four, you know, internet call responses, do they hide the two, three-hour response to where we get to twenty-seven minutes in our range?
Uh, yeah, yeah, because this, this does not apply, I mean, if we get, we get the call about, you know, there's, there's a homeless guy or someone, some noise behind my house in the crib bed, let's say, right? That, that's not, we, we, we're not gonna have that handled over the phone, obviously. We're gonna send an officer, uh, we'll probably send an airship, if one's, I'm sorry, a police helicopter, uh, to, to assist us, uh, with that, that's also an alternative response, right? They can put eyes on pretty quickly. Um, so, you know, the other thing is, in evaluating response times, I, I must point out that, um, some agencies, uh, they toll, uh, their time from the moment that they actually dispatch the officer, send the officer, right? In other words, they don't include the time in which the, uh, resident, uh, or, or calling party that the person who made the call. These times factor when the person is actually calling, and then that call sits in our queue, depending on the priority, uh, and then the officer is dispatched if one is required and, and it's appropriate, and then once they conclude that, right, once they get there, all of that is part of our response time.
Uh, that's, that's, that's in there, I think that was a question that under Leo had last time, um, and so that's, that's great to know. Um, you're kind of pivoting a little bit, and it kind of goes into your, um, you know, kind of the, the homeless type, uh, issues, I mean, you and I have seen firsthand walking the crib beds, um, but, but have you looked at, um, at, at alternative programs such as, you know, and, like, the one that is kind of, uh, in the news right now is the kazoo program up in Eugene, um, you know, that, that, you know, respond to, you know, especially the homeless, homeless folks that, um, that are struggling with mental health issues, that may not respond very well to, you know, someone trying to help them, but might have a gun on their hip, you know, like our whole team, and, and there, that are police officers, have police, you know, kind of exploring those programs, and, and maybe it's not valid to keep you, and I guess, uh, they're not, but...
Yeah, uh, great, great, great question, and, and again, part of the, you know, kind of the national, uh, narrative, uh, is what is the appropriate police response? Because I do agree, Tim, that in some instances, for some folks suffering a, a mental health crisis, seeing a uniformed police officer, uh, with everything that they, you know, put on their bodies, uh, can, can, you know, lead that interaction into a different direction. Uh, we, we are looking at various programs, we also partner with the county, uh, um, clinicians, CityNet, uh, it, it, you know, our, our, uh, response model is a de-escalation framework, n- n- nothing that we, uh, initiated, uh, post George Floyd, this has been part of our training cadre for the last two years at a minimum, probably longer. Uh, we have a state-of-the-art, um, uh, training facility for decision-making, it's a virtual piece, um, it is, is the premier training platform in Orange County, and it is, uh, at, at the Senate Police Department. So we, we, uh, train to, to de-escalation, and, you know, moving forward, that, that needs to actually continue to be a part of the conversation is, is what, uh, does, um, you know, other alternative police response look like, uh, for those instances, which, which is, is quite a few of, of those, of those calls that we've received. Um, we have had, uh, as a result, again, of the hiring, um, and these two overarching goals and, and through support, uh, by Measure X, we have, um, increased our quality of life, uh, team deployment from, in June of 2019, we had one full-time police officer assigned to the city, one. So to fast forward, uh, to September of 2020, we're talking less than eighteen months, um, we go to one police sergeant, uh, which, that unit has never had a, a supervisor of that rank assigned full-time, and ten police officers. That is a significant investment, uh, in, in that area, and, and, you know, the, the supervisor, for example, I will share with you, um, he is not, you know, someone who, uh, was law and told, if you will, he actually has a passion for this work, and so we look to see, make sure we have the right fit, um, every police officer is not cut from the same mold, and so there are officers that, that really enjoy this work and connecting, uh, folks that are, that are suffering from mental health with, with, you know, resources and, and supportive housing, et cetera, so, so we have that, and the invest, the investment is, is very clear, right? When you go from one, one police officer doing this type of work to eleven, that's significant.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree that that is significant, I just, I just, um, you know, and obviously I'm talking to the chief here, so, you know, so that, you know, I, I take what I'm gonna say, you know, in, in, in context, but I just question whether, uh, from my work with the homeless, whether someone that, with a badge and, more importantly, a, a gun on their hip is the best response for, um, you know, a, 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 all of these, um, these, these, these calls that, um, you know, maybe, e- e- even after, I think Sheriff Barnes said after the, um, the, 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 uh, the shooting of, of Mr. Reinhold, you know, he, he'd indicated that, hey, the sheriffs really, you know, maybe they shouldn't be responding to all these, and so I, I would encourage, encourage you and the city to continue to work towards strategies that, um, you know, de-escalation strategies that uh, may be, be a little bit better fit than a, uh, than an, than an officer with a, with a gun, uh...
Makes sense, makes sense, thank you.
Yeah, um, and I think that was all of my, my kind of questions, um, oh, I do have one comment that maybe, that's probably unrelated to, to any of this, um, you know, we, we have the, um, we, we all hear the helicopter quite often.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And at certain times, there are comments that, you know, that they're on the loudspeaker, and I understand, I think some of this is outsourced to the sheriff, um, but is there a way to, I mean, three-quarters of the time, eighty percent of the time, maybe even higher, no one can understand what they're saying? And, and we have this great thing, you know, social media out there.
Yeah.
Or, or even just a website that, hey, can we, you know, log in and see just, where, hey, this is what the, the helicopter is saying? Is, is that, is that something that, that would be, you know, possible to do?
Yeah, I, I, um, I do have a, a social media coordinator, um, of course, these incidents that you're referring to, um, sometimes I would say, certainly, comfortably I can say, or probably oftentimes occur after hours, and, uh, the announcements that you're hearing are likely, uh, regarding ongoing tactical, uh, situations and/or, believe it or not, missing people.
Yeah, I, I, I would say it's one of the missing people that I'm concerned about.
Yeah, um, we, we can, we can certainly look at, um, you know, uh, posting information, uh, uh, possibly through our dispatch, um, I, I will, I will have staff explore that, understanding that, you know, these incidents oftentimes occur multiple times a day, and at different, you know, different days of the week, et cetera, and, and, yeah, all, all here support services are, are contracted out, we, we have no Senate of Police-owned, um, you know, aircraft.
Yeah, I just think, I think it'd be helpful, and obviously not for your tactical calls that you're trying, but, but, you know, hey, there's an eleven-year-old, you know, that we're looking for, and you're saying what color suit he, or, you know, hat he had on last morning, what age, and that, that type of stuff is, is important to me, and, you know, n- no one can tell what they're saying. But anyway, okay, I've, I've, uh, worn out my welcome, uh, so we still have others that would, I'm sure would like to, uh, to, to ask some questions, so, um, others, please, uh, please talk.
Hi, this is, uh, hi, Chief Valentin, committee member, Pedro. Uh, how are you? Good, good, thank you for your time and for, for, um, for all the information that you, you have provided to the committee. Um, I have three questions, uh, you, you humor me, uh, the first one is a follow-up on the, uh, homeless, uh, issue, um, and the other two are going to be relating to trust and quality of public safety. Uh, so the first one relating to nine-eleven calls, I'm just curious, um, you know, I think homelessness has become a, a, a very big, uh, topic in, in, in Santana, especially as, you know, the city struggles to, to figure out, you know, what are the strategies? Um, but I'm curious to know, out of the, uh, total nine-eleven calls, um, and this might be putting you around the spot, I'm not sure you can provide that data, but out of the total of those nine-eleven calls, based on your estimate about how many and what is the percentage that, of those calls that are related to homelessness, um, incidental issues? And...
Yeah, s- specific nine-on-one, um, life-threatening calls related to homelessness? I don't have that data point, uh, off, off the top of my head, but I, but I certainly can, can look to get that, and I can provide it to, to Tim, and he can share it with the group.
Thank you, and, and following up on that, if, if you could also provide the data, uh, you mentioned life-threatening, right, but also the different, um, between those different priorities that you laid out and, and the information you provided, uh, how many of those calls, you know, fall under each of those priorities? And potentially also, in which, um, what are the zip codes, uh, where our neighborhoods are just for those, of, 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 and relating to homelessness as well? Uh, thank you. The second question, uh, on the...
Actually, a, a, a member of prayer, I just want, before I forget, um, so chief, you shouldn't send anything to myself for me to share it, and you'll wanna share that with, um, city staff, and then they can share it out, uh, uh, as a, as a...
Miss Catherine Downs is the big boss here, right?
Right.
Yeah.
All right, go, go ahead, sorry, Rick, I...
No, no, thank you, thank you. Um, so the second question, and, and, and this is relating to, to the cost of police settlements to, to the city, uh, I remember the last, not sure if I remember correctly, but the last number that I saw was probably in 2017, where, um, I saw there was a, a number that was thrown out that about seventeen million dollars, uh, the city had paid towards, uh, uh, settlements relating police misconduct or police incidents with residents over the last decade. Do you have any latest numbers, uh, up to date of, on, on the last year, so about how much money has the city paid towards those type of settlements?
So, again, um, I, I don't have those numbers, I can certainly, um, get those from the city attorney's office, which is the appropriate, um, um, department that would, that would have those data points and then provide them. So, so, let me just get this correct, though. So, you, you mentioned you saw a figure, uh, in 2017 from the ten years prior, what you're asking for is data for the past ten years, so twenty, ten to 2020?
Right.
Yeah, so we can, once again, look at, to see what those, uh, wh- what those figures are and provide them, uh, to Mrs. Downs.
Thank you, and on that as well, if, if we can also be broken down by year, just to see, you know, what has been the progression year-over-year?
Sure, sure, makes sense.
And then, last little third question, which I'm not sure also you're gonna have the data on, but, uh, will the number of, of, of citizen complaints, uh, of police officers of the last eight as well, broken down by year?
So, uh, I actually do have that, not in front of me, because I have to exit out of the... of the Zoom, and I don't wanna get lost, but if you go to our police department website, there is a, a tab, Open Government, uh, that, uh, did not exist there, uh, before I took over as chief. You're gonna find a couple of different pieces there. First, you're gonna find, um, our calls for service volume, um, month-to-month average a year. You're gonna find the number of citizen complaints, uh, there as well. You're gonna, you're gonna find the, um, different classifications of, uh, citizen complaint findings. Um, you're also gonna find the protocol on officer-involved shootings and in custody deaths. Um, I, I highlight that piece, something that you will not find, um, in many, many police departments, forward-facing information like that. Um, on the, on the citizen complaints, I, the data point there is at least three years, if not five years. Pretty much five.
Thank you. That's definitely, that's definitely something that many citizens have, so I appreciate that, uh.
Sure.
And that will be it for me. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak up? Go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Hey, this is, uh, Commissioner Lugo, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Quick question for you. I think this would be pretty simple, but I think you just, you put, you touched on it when you were discussing it, but I was really curious to hear a little bit more details on how the time response is, um, closed. In other words, from the point it started to the time it is considered, you know, a response has been given, m- meaning the end of the clock, of the shot clock or the clock, uh, does the police officer do that manually, or is that automatic?
So, great question. So, uh, from the time that the dispatcher receives the phone call, and he or she is collecting information, um, uh, until that person assigns an officer and that officer goes on scene. As soon as the officer arrives on scene, um, there's a, a button that they can push on their, on their, uh, computer, um, or they can, you know, manually get on the radio and say, I'm, I'm, I'm here, and that stops the clock. This is just response time now, right?
Right.
Because the call itself could take, you know, our six-minute response, could, you know, if it's a fatality, we will be there for hours. But, yeah, that, from, from the time we get the call in, and then usually the officer will hit a, um, automatic button, which sends a signal that the officer is on scene.
Let me, let me ask this question. You know, technology has really advanced a lot, you know, over the, the few years, let alone the last decade or so. Has there ever been any consideration to having that, uh, clock stopped automatically using technology? GPS arriving at the location?
So we do, we do have, uh, GPS capability, and so the dispatcher has that all available, so, um, we're automatically registers an officer going on scene without having to push the button or make some sort of, um, um, forward action, if you will. Um, I, I don't know that we have that in place today. Um, I can certainly check, but, uh, the, the dispatcher has a full view, uh, even if the officer doesn't push the button ninety-seven, I'm sorry, on scene, they, they can see where all their units are. Um, but it's, it's, it's a good question that, that I, that I will follow up on.
Uh, thank you, Chief.
Yes.
All right, is there anyone else, uh, like to, to, uh, ask the chief anything, or we, we ready to move on? We haven't heard from everyone yet, so.
Just member Landoverde, I don't have any questions, just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. Um, I feel like my questions are basically answered with everyone else asking the same question, so, um, just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, this is member, member Lewis, I concur. Thank you very much, and very informational.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, perfect. Uh, Chief, I, I really appreciate it on behalf of the entire, um, uh, committee here, uh, and the residents in general. Also, I appreciate you taking the time and, and putting your, uh, putting your best uniform on for us, even though we can't see it. You got them. So, but, uh, I, I much appreciate it, and, uh, please pass along all of our things to, uh, to, to, to everyone that, uh, um, that goes down the streets for us every day, so thank you.
Will do. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Um, and, uh, so next would be item number four on our agenda, um, which would be Parks and Rec, um, Community Services. And so is, uh, um, Director Rudolph with us?
So, uh, Chris, and I can.
Lisa, are you there? I'm sorry, Tim.
Sorry. Sorry, having, um, yes, I am. I'm trying to load the PowerPoint, give me one second here.
Okay.
Are you able to see the PowerPoint?
Yes, we do.
Uh, Jeff Johnson in the, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Well, good evening, Chair, um, Johnson, and Vice Chair Landeverde, and members of the Measure X Oversight Committee. I'm pleased to be here this evening. My name is Lisa Rudolph. I'm the Executive Director of the Parks Recreation and Community Services Agency, and with me tonight is Frank Arroyo. He is our Senior Management Analyst. So tonight, I'm here to provide you information regarding the Measure X impacts on our agency, and specifically, I will share how these, uh, allocations are helping to improve the quality of life for our residents in providing for youth and seniors and maintaining our park system. In fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty, the Measure X funding allocation received was over four point seven million dollars for park maintenance contracts, park zoo and library staff, and tree care. And since then, we've made some changes in our, uh, expenditures due to the pandemic, uh, which resulted also in a hiring freeze. So some of the expenditures represent an increase in spending from fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen, such as the park and zoo maintenance contracts and tree care. And, uh, in addition, due to that hiring freeze, staff funding was used for capital improvements, uh, and other needs in our department, specific to Measure X funding parameters, and I'll share with you some of those, uh, projects here. Okay. Sorry about that. Let's go back to the senior center. Um, we are taking advantage of this time due to the pandemic, uh, to renovate both of our senior centers. The Southwest Senior Center is almost completed, and the Santa Ana Senior Center, uh, is, uh, about halfway finished. Uh, both of the centers will receive new roofs, floors, painting on the inside and outside of the buildings, uh, new cabinets, kitchen and equipment. We've updated the restrooms, uh, provided brand-new furniture and chairs. Uh, we've, um, also completed some walkway, walkway repairs. A lot of the walkway around the senior centers, which was very dangerous for our seniors, was buckling, and so those have been fixed, and also we've updated the landscaping. Um, these, the senior centers are really utilized on a daily basis, um, by our seniors, and they were in desperate need of renovation. So in the pictures, you can see that, uh, this is the Southwest Senior Center, and, um, we have painted the, uh, inside and outside, uh, the gray color, and we're gonna do the same for the Santa Ana Senior Center, and you'll see the new floors and the furniture, uh, and the beautiful kitchen. And, um, I cannot wait until we open, uh, because our seniors are going to be blown away, and they're just going to, to love this beautiful building. Next is, um, our Park Tree Care, uh, which is primarily, uh, for tree trimming services throughout our park system. And this slide shows the trimming at the Southwest Senior Center, Thornton Park, uh, Centennial Park, and the Santa Ana Zoo. Um, our tree care budget increased from fifty thousand annually to two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, however, we've already blown to that, and, um, it's, you know, only the first quarter of the year. So we have a lot of backlog, uh, maintenance, uh, regarding our trees, um, and it's very critical for our trees to be taken care of, uh, because they've, you know, it's for the safety of our patrons, we don't want any tree branches, uh, falling on anyone. Um, the tree planting, we don't really do tree planting, we have some wonderful volunteers that do that. Uh, for example, the Orange County Conservation Corps just, um, planted, uh, over two hundred trees in, uh, Lily King Park, Sandpoint Park, Saddleback View Park, Delhi Park, and the Pacific Electric Bike Trail. So these folks will come in and provide the trees, provide, um, uh, the staffing to, um, um, put the trees in the, in the ground, and, um, other volunteer organizations like People in Trees and Stanbridge University, uh, will also find volunteers to come and do, uh, the work. So we really appreciate what they do, and it really helps with, um, replenishing our tree stock. Next is, pardon me, on the slides here, uh, next is painting and improvements, uh, that we have been doing, um, I'm sorry, painting and fence and gate installation. Um, we have had some painting improvements at Jerome Park Concession Building and the Salgado Community Center. Uh, we've painted the inside of the community center, and we've also replaced the floors. Um, some of our fence installations had been at the, uh, Santa Ana Zoo. In the very front of the zoo, there now is turnstiles at the front gate, and, uh, this is a trem- tremendous improvement to help, you know, secure the access to the zoo and allow one percent of the time to pass through without, you know, with, with a ticket. And before, people could just walk through, um, easily, and it was hard to keep track. So we have some great turnstiles put in. We also, um, have the Jerome Balt Field fencing. If you see the, um, middle picture on the top, uh, top middle with the black, um, vinyl-coated black fencing, we're replacing all of our cyclone fencing, uh, whenever we have funds available with this black-coated, uh, fencing, and, uh, it's, it's, uh, really a great improvement. It looks really good. Um, we also have installed a fence at Centennial Park. Uh, the picture on the very right top, the blue fence around where the water is, the lake is, um, this never had a fence, and the playground, the kids who use the playground, uh, could just fall in. So we, uh, put that, uh, gate in, and it's much more safe for our kids when they use that. Um, in addition, we installed, um, parking lot gates at, um, about sixty percent of our parks, and, uh, this is helpful so we can lock up our gates at night when the park closes, uh, we'll have our park security or our park ambassadors lock the gates. Next, next is our sports field, uh, and park security lighting. Um, we will complete, um, uh, retrofit, uh, projects at Jerome and Rosita Parks and the Santa Ana Stadium. We're actually not taking the lights down, we're changing the, uh, metal halide bulbs to the high-efficiency LED lights, and this really makes for a better, safer, um, uh, football field, soccer field, baseball field, uh, and for our participants. Um, we also will be replacing the light poles and the, uh, light fixtures at Riverview Park. The light poles actually are wood, and those are very dangerous, so we have that in the budget, and we'll be doing that this year. Um, and then we will also be, um, well, actually, when funding allows, we need to replace the, um, light poles and the lights at Memorial and Thornton Parks in the future. Uh, and lastly, on this slide is the, um, the flag poles. Um, we have, we are installing twenty-one flag poles without lights, uh, with new flag poles, uh, and they have solar-powered lights. And simply, this is just to honor the American flag and fly it twenty-four hours a day with the proper illumination, uh, during all hours of darkness. The next slide is in regards to pool renovation and cement repairs. Uh, we have renovated all of our pools, uh, that are located at Jerome, El Salvador, Memorial, Salgado, and Centanita Parks. Um, the, the pools are really beyond their useful life, and, uh, you know, in the future, we need to replace them. Um, however, we don't have funding, so we do the best we can by, uh, fixing the, um, the coping and the walkways around the pool and the interior of the lights, um, but that's something we'll need to address definitely in, in the future. And then the other two pictures are, um, the, um, uh, walkway at Lily King Park. Uh, it was the, uh, broken, uh, and lifted sidewalk, so we're trying to go through, and we're trying to repair and replace those type of, uh, items. Uh, the next slide is the park exercise equipment, and we've installed fitness courts, uh, which is on the left, um, and at Jerome, Delhi, and Rosita Parks with our Measure X funding. And we are installing two additional fitness courts at El Salvador and Cabrillo Parks, uh, with the cannabis public benefit funds. Uh, and we're gonna be doing that in the next, uh, probably couple of months, though should be completed. Um, and these fitness courts are, uh, in cooperation with the National Fitness Campaign, uh, which we are a part of, uh, to help provide free fitness opportunities to our community. Um, it, it's very important that we provide these opportunities, because Santa Ana is in the top three of the highest obesity rates in Orange County, and, and that's not the top three we wanna be in. So we wanna continue to provide these opportunities for the public to utilize, so they don't have to go to and pay for a gym membership. They can go to their park, they can get some exercise and get healthy. Um, the two pictures on the right are, um, fitness equipment. Um, this is at the Maple and Occidental, it's a linear park, um, and this is, uh, new equipment, uh, and it is heavily used every day. There were some super old equipment, so we, um, it was unsafe, um, so we took that down and replaced it with this new equipment. Um, the majority of our park restrooms are in despicable conditions, and so we are replacing restrooms with prefabricated buildings, and we're designing them very purposefully, um, and they include graffiti coating on the building, auto door locks, auto lights inside. We also are designing them with a two-to-four inch opening at the bottom of the doors. Um, the sinks are on the outside of the building, uh, and they will have auto shut-offs of the water, uh, when the park closes. Um, and these restrooms are really a great improvement, uh, for the community to use. The photo on the left is the Santa Ana Zoo bathroom renovation, and on the right is the restroom at Delhi Park. We are almost finished replacing the restrooms, uh, the restroom at Thornton Park. Um, in addition, we're also replacing restrooms at Campesino, Memorial, and Madison Parks, and we're utilizing CDBG funding for those. Next, uh, we are systematically replacing our park, uh, signs, uh, throughout our system, our park system, and the signs on the slide, uh, include the Pat McGlenn, um, Skate Park, um, which is at Centennial Park. Um, and there is also an interpretive sign at Thornton Park next to that. There's an entry sign at the Saddleback View Park, and then there are park rule signs that we're installing throughout our park system. We're making sure that we're, um, um, providing those in two languages. This picture, um, is about some new equipment that we were able to purchase, and on the left is a new freezer, uh, for the Santa Ana Zoo to keep, uh, the food, um, for the animals. And also for the Santa Ana Zoo is an X-ray, uh, machine. Uh, this is, um, this is brand-new, and it is very helpful to staff. Um, this, this machine, you can actually, um, develop the film, and the old way, uh, was, uh, we had to, um, get the film developed. Uh, so this is a very quick process, it's updated, you can manipulate the pictures, and, um, and that's what's important, uh, and so we're able to, uh, care for our animals. And the next slide is, we've done some roof repairs. Uh, this is the Santa Ana Zoo office. We've also replaced the roofs at the Santa Ana Senior Center and the Southwest Senior Center. Some of our general park improvements include landscape enhancements, um, lake aeration and stream renovations. Our parks are really, really looking beautiful now, they've had some time to, to grow, uh, during the, uh, pandemic where people are not utilizing them that much, uh, and so we're very. And so we're very happy about that. We do have some issues with our lakes at Centennial and Thornton Lake. They really need some major renovations. They're leaking. We have fish that are floating to the top and dying. They're really in need of some renovation. And that's a big-ticket item, but we need to address that in the future. And that cost for both of those is anywhere between 1.5 million and 2.5 million. So we just need to keep that in mind as we're renovating our parks. Similar to the tree planting, we also have volunteers that help with plants. For example, we had a group of volunteers at Willard Park plant at our entry. They provide the volunteers. They provide the plants. And we're very, very grateful and thankful that they do that. And lastly, our agency needs to focus on really some ongoing funding for the future for our contract services, our staffing, and our park maintenance. It's critical to have our contracts for landscaping, ball diamonds, pest control, and fertilization. And when these contracts were awarded, there was enough money in fiscal year 1920 to cover the increased costs. However, the additional funding for 2021 is needed. And so what we're doing to make that up is we're cutting in other areas. But we really need to address this in the future to make sure that we are covering our funding for our contracts. This is critical to me because the community, when I go out into the community, they want parks that are safe. They want parks that are clean. They want parks that are well-maintained. And that is where we are focusing. And this is where we need to make some improvements in the future. And lastly, the funding for the implementation of the Parks Facilities Trails and Open Space Master Plan will be needed. This next fiscal year, we're going to be creating our Parks Master Plan. And of that, we're going to have an implementation of the results of that plan. So we will need some funding in the future for that. That is the end of my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent. Thanks, Lisa. Those pictures are, make me proud of the parks, and I can hear it in your voice that you are also.
Absolutely.
So members, do we have any questions or comments for Director Lugo?
This is Member Leo. First of all, congratulations. You came to us about a year ago, said you were going to do some stuff, and you did a lot of stuff. And as a resident, I'm greatly appreciative of that work. Second of all, you mentioned about some budget stuff. And one of the things that Commissioner Perea has asked about is youth services and youth programs. And one of the things is that the parks have lots of programs but also need maintenance. And so one of the things I would suggest, at least going forward, at least for the next year, knowing that we don't know what the fallout's going to be from COVID. We don't know what the sales tax, we don't know what any of it's going to look like. One of the things we do know is that the marijuana tax fund has at least $3 million, and Catherine can correct me if I'm wrong, about $3 million for youth services and youth programs. That is a place where I think parks and recs and the youth groups can get together and figure out how to use that $3 million effectively and maybe get us over the hump through the downturn of COVID, assuming we're not going to see real stuff, real back-to-normalcy, quasi-normalcy until May or June of next year. So I point you in that direction as you were talking about looking for funds. That is something where I think the Parks and Recs Commission and the Youth Commission can get together and talk about what could we do, at least in the interim. But thanks for the good work.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Also, just for your information, every three months, I report out on the use of cannabis public benefit funds for youth services. And the last time I did that was on September 15, 2020. And so you'll see a variety of programs and services for youth that are offered by the library, Parks and Recreation, and Parks and Recreation. And also, we've taken the Youth Commission their input. And definitely in the future, we'll continue to seek the input of the Youth Commission as well as the Park and Rec Commission for those type of items. But no, that's great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, so I'll ask a question. This is Tim. Lisa, again, congratulations on doing a great job with the limited budget that you have.
Thank you.
I mean, I think you're 100% right in terms of, you know, people want to have nice parks. They want to be able to go use them. So I appreciate the devotion that you have towards that. And as I'm congratulating you, I forgot my question. Oh, I know what it was now. The Park Security Program?
Yes.
Is that, I believe that that was a kind of a trial, if I remember right. Can you give an update on where we are with that? Is it working to your satisfaction? Do you see it going in a different direction?
Yes, certainly. The Park Security Program is continuing on. That was funded in the budget. And we still have our officers, the Park Security Officers, patrolling our parks. And they are augmenting or helping, you know, the police department. If there are any issues, they call the police department if they need help. They're kind of a report, observe and report. I think it is critical in this community to have eyes on the park, our parks as much as possible. We also have a Park Ambassador program, which helps to also have some eyes on the park. They're essentially city employees that drive around and check on permitted activities in the parks. However, they fill out reports, and they turn it in, and they will provide information on the app with the graffiti or inappropriate things happening in the park. They'll call the police department. So I definitely think that the park security is a good thing, and it's continuing to help us. You know, they can't fight, but they certainly can, like I say, call the police department when needed. Another thing I'd like to mention that we're going to do is the Park Host Program. So we're going to have a Park Host Program, which is a person who lives at the park 24/7. They're not on duty 24/7, but they're kind of a conduit to the community. And they are also someone who can help folks with the park rules and just be a friendly face. And we're going to try this at Thornton Park. And we're just about ready to launch the program, and we're seeking people who want to do that. And they live in a fifth-wheel or an RV. We allow them to live at the park for free. And in exchange for that, they have, you know, hours that they'll work, and they'll walk the park. And they wear vests. They'll have a Park Host sign. And so we'll also do a big media marketing splash on this before it takes off. So that's something else we're doing to help our parks and facilities.
Well, that program sounds good. I wonder if they're going to sell firewood, like when you're out camping or not. But, so is that, I mean, from a funding perspective, is that a paid position, or are they essentially kind of volunteering or in exchange of having a, you know, essentially a, you know, a place to kind of stay, for lack of a better term?
Right.
Or are they on salary, or?
No, it is not a paid position. In exchange for their volunteering, they are allowed to live at the park. We provide their electricity and any kind of, probably we're going to give them a cell phone and any other kind of equipment to do their job. And so it's done in other agencies. It's similar to the state parks also. They have Park Hosts. And so, yeah, so we'll see how that works out in Santa Ana. And like I said, it's a pilot and looking forward to starting that.
Yeah, that sounds great. I think having some continuity of, you know, at the park is, you know, that's what I think a lot of people think back to, like the park rangers. They kind of started to know their ranger, you know, around and stuff. And so I think that will help contribute to that. So that's great.
Right.
All right, guys, who else, anyone else have any questions or comments for Parks and Rec here?
This is Member Landiverde. Lisa, thank you so much for the presentation. Everything looks amazing, like just from what you guys showed us, so great job on that.
Thank you.
I have a question on, I know you mentioned for Thornton Park or like the lakes. Was that the funding that you were talking about just for the lakes? Or is it just the parks, those parks in general that needed that 1.5 to 2.5 million?
Yeah, the, we had some aeration that we did to both of the Centennial and Thornton Park, but that's not enough. We need to totally renovate. So we need to seek funding to, Thornton Park Lake will take about 1.5 million, and the Centennial Lake will take about 2.5 million. So we haven't identified funding. We've applied for many grants, but we've not received them because it's a maintenance thing, and there's not maintenance grants out there. So we're going to have to figure out some way to find some money to renovate those lakes.
Okay, thank you for that. Do you know how, like, far into the future? I know you mentioned that this is like a future project. And the only reason I'm asking too is just because I live near Thornton Park, and I've walked through that park, and that lake smells so gross, like.
It is disgusting.
Like, it's not even, you want to go walk, and it's like, it's unbearable. And I mean, I know there's kids that go out and play in there and everything, but, oh, man, it's bad. So I guess, just an idea, do you know if, like, how far into the future you guys are looking to do this renovation?
Well, it's not, as soon as I could find the funding. So it's going to be, it's going to be a while. If we find some funding, we certainly would fast-track it to the top of the list. But in the meantime, we're going to try to keep it as clean as possible and keep it repaired and aerated. But I understand what you're saying. The lake is very smelly. And there was a point, there was fish floating up to the top, and we try to get out there. We clean those out as quick as we can. So it's on our mind, and it's on our list. So I promise that we'll try to get it fixed.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Yeah, I saw what you guys did with everything else. So looking forward to seeing what that would bring to the future for these other parks.
Great. There's one more thing for Thornton Park I got to tell you about. We are going to be putting in some splash pads or some splash parks throughout our park system, and Thornton Park is one of those. So you'll see a great water activity at the park here soon.
Awesome. That's exciting.
Hey, Lisa, this is Tim again.
Yes.
You know, in regards to the grants, I know that when, and I think this goes through parks, but there's a grant for, I think, it might be called the Triangle Park off of 17th Street, right at the riverbed?
Yes.
And when the city was applying for that, I received an email saying, hey, can you write a letter, you know, supporting this? And because I, you know, expressed some support before. You know, do, and that letter went off to, I think, the grant, you know, to someone in government, not the city, but, you know, someone higher that was, you know, making the decision on that. Do those, you know, is that something that we, that is helpful when you're trying to get grant funding to have, you know, just regular residents write, you know, letters of support, you know, similar to like a public comment at a city council meeting? You know, or, I'm just curious if that would be, you know, because I feel that, like, we're going to probably start relying upon these grants pretty heavily for a lot of this stuff, to where, you know, are we able to get, you know, better responses from those grants if we, you know, engage the community?
Absolutely. Some of the grants require community engagement, and they want to, you know, know what the community thinks, and do they support it. The neighborhood associations have been great in writing letters as we've applied for the Proposition 68 grants, which we've received quite a bit of money through those. But yeah, any kind of neighborhood association or citizens or anyone who will help us out and write letters of support, we definitely add those to our grant applications.
Okay, I would suggest that, I mean, that's the only time that I've been involved with that. And I feel like I kind of have my pulse on a lot of things. So my comment would be that let's make sure we're engaging the, you know, community as much as possible for that. Because I think there's a lot of people, especially with parks, that will, you know, they have your passion also for it, and they're going to be right alongside you, supporting it. But we just need to know what we need to do sometimes.
Absolutely. Thank you. Will do.
Okay, sorry for stealing whoever was going to speak next. So go ahead, anyone?
Hey, this is Member Lugo. I just wanted to say thank you, Lisa. You're doing a great job. Anything you need from us, how we could support you. Like Tim said, you know, just reach out.
Awesome. That is awesome. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
And this is Member Lewis. I'm new to the committee, but I wanted to just thank you very much for your presentation. It was very, very informative. So thank you.
Thank you.
This is Member Cara Gildea. Nice second thought. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think that is, everyone's kind of chimed in, I think. So Lisa, on behalf of, you know, the committee, and, you know, on behalf of just the residents in general, thank you for all your hard work with, you know, kind of strange year. And hopefully, we can keep the maintenance of these great structures and pictures that you showed us up over the coming years because I'm sure that they're going to get used and appreciated in that time. So thank you very much for giving us an update and getting me excited to get out of my office and into some of these parks.
Awesome. Excellent. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I think we are at the end of our business calendar. And so if there's anyone that's hanging on that wants to make a public comment on non-agenda-type items, or even as agenda items, as sure, I would allow that to happen at this moment. So staff, is there anyone queued up at all that's hung with us for the past almost two hours now?
We do have a caller on the line.
All right.
Caller with the last four digits of 1412, please dial star six to speak.
Hi, it's Keith Carpenter.
Hi, Keith.
Can you guys hear me? It's breaking up a little bit on my end. So hopefully you can, you can hear me on your end.
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Yeah, a couple, a couple of comments. First of all, on the parks, I mean, you can't help but praise what they've done with the little amount of funding they've had. And the important part of that is how much good that really does the community. And I think that's too often overlooked, that the little bit of money at the bottom can really help things out and really help the people. Great pride in the city. It helps reduce crime and all those things for money well spent. Again, not very much of it. So my recommendation to the committee is to really, really, really lobby hard to the council for additional money for the Parks and Rec because, again, we can all see, I can hear the excitement in everybody's voices. They're commenting how much good it's done and how much better it makes the city. So I strongly urge you to do that. Other than that, I had some questions for the police officer, I'm sorry, the police commander, but I suppose he's long gone by now. But yeah, that was about it. The only other thing I was curious about is the Oversight Committee for the Police, what the progress on that was. And again, that's something I think Measure X money could be used for because I know that was a little bit of a point of contention. So yeah, those were my comments. Again, more money for the Parks and Recs. It does everybody a whole lot of good. And just follow up on that Oversight Committee for the Police. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Mr. Carpenter, for your feedback and continued involvement. Kristen, do we have any other callers?
No, that was it. Thank you.
All right, excellent. And so I think at this time, we are at staff comments, is that right? All right. Excellent. Um, and so I think at this time, we are at, um, staff, uh, staff comments. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. And we have nothing to share. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Um, I, actually, real, real quick, uh, um, would you be able to, well, just remind everyone what our next meeting is? Because I don't think we adjourned to, to a meeting, right? We, uh, just so everyone knows on calendar.
Yeah, you do adjourn to, uh, I believe it's December 9th. Is that correct, Kristen?
Yes, that is correct.
Got it. Okay. I, I, yes, okay. Perfect. Okay. Well, um, so, um, member, uh, staff member comments are done. So at this time, um, so let's go around and do, um, many member comments. Um, so, uh, uh, member Lugo, do you want to start?
Um, sure. I just, uh, you know, what, what comes to mind is, um, the time period that we're in right now, the challenges that we've all had. I just, uh, uh, like to say, everybody keep your head up. Uh, definitely vote and encourage those people around you to vote. And I do appreciate the team that, um, comprises, you know, this, uh, committee, um, all the support staff and, uh, those people that come and present to us. Uh, thank you very much and I look forward to continue to serve the city and, um, work with you guys to help the city grow into a much better city than it is today.
Excellent. How about, uh, member Leo?
Uh, I just wanted to congratulate the commission as a whole. I thought the two presentations tonight from the police chief and from the Parks and Recs folks pretty much followed what we hoped they would follow, which is last year we tried to set standards and to come with, come to us with answers. And both departments came to us with answers and progress and needs. So I think I want everybody who's been on the commission since the beginning and, and our new folks, that I think we set the standard and I think it's working. And I look forward to hearing from the other departments as we go forward. Because now that we're in this process of educating the public on what we're spending the money on, I think it's, um, I think the work that we did early on has really helped us as we go forward. So, um, thanks to everybody and, um, welcome our newest commissioner.
Excellent. Um, how about, uh, member Perea?
Definitely, uh, definitely echo what everyone has been saying. Uh, was very pleased, uh, from today's presentations and the overall progress that has been made. Um, and definitely everyone in this committee. Uh, so everyone in this committee had, cares deeply about the city and obviously for the best, uh, the city can do and, and for the rest of us. So, um, definitely looking forward to the next meeting.
Excellent. And member Par- Perez, oh my goodness. Um, member Lori, Cara Guzian. Oh goodness, I'm sorry.
Thank you. No worries. Not a problem at all. Um, I also want to thank the police chief and, um, the executive director of Parks and Rec for being with us tonight. Their presentations were very informative and shedding light on some of these things that we had and they answered all our questions. So great to be here. Happy to serve. Uh, looking forward to our next meeting. Thank you.
Excellent. And, uh, and our newest member, member Louis.
I want to thank everyone for the warm welcome and also the informative presentations that we had today. Um, I have to say that I've looked at the previous, uh, submission or presentations to the council last year and I agree with Commissioner Leo that the, um, standards that the committee have set, um, based upon what I heard from both, um, executive director Rudolph and the police chief. Um, it really, you know, caught sort of borne itself out in, um, what's been, uh, done with the funding, Measure X funding thus far. So I look forward to, again, help, to helping to contribute to that progress and contribute ideas and, um, and to serve the people of Santa Ana. So thank you for welcoming me and thank you very much.
Excellent. And vice chair Landa Verde.
I just second, um, everything member Leo said. I mean, he pretty much said it, I think, the way we all feel. So, um, I'm glad to be part of this committee and just look forward to many more to come.
Excellent. Thanks. And I'm, I'll, uh, second, third and fourth of everyone's comments and, uh, just appreciate, um, staff's hard work and, and, and putting this together. And most especially because, I mean, we have to realize that this is a, a special, special meeting. And, you know, so it's above and beyond what they're normally doing. So I appreciate them taking the time to coordinate all this. Um, and, um, you know, the, the, these, these meetings tend to, tend to run a little long. Uh, and, uh, but I think they're very informative. Um, you know, we, we obviously have an election on Tuesday and this group may be changing, you know, not at our next meeting in December, but, uh, but, uh, at some point. But I, you know, appreciate everyone, the first, uh, you know, this is the first generation of, of this, uh, committee. And I think we, we're setting the tone for, for, uh, for future, uh, for future members. Um, and, uh, also if there's any, if there's any changes, hopefully, uh, hopefully there's not because I think we've got a good group going here. Uh, but, uh, thanks to, uh, to, to staff for the hard work as well as for, uh, for, for chief, the chief Valentin and, and the executive director Rudolph for, and, and the people, the folks that helped them with their presentations. Um, it's much appreciated. I know the community appreciates it also. Um, so with that, um, I would adjourn our meeting to our next regular meeting of the Measure X Citizen Oversight Committee, um, is scheduled for December 9th of 2020 at 6:00 PM. Um, whether that's telephonic or in room 1600 of, of 20 Civic Center Plaza or not, but, uh, one of the two. Um, I hope to see everyone, uh, safe or hear everyone safe at that time. Um, so, uh, with that, I think we're done unless staff, uh, unless I've missed anything.
Nope, you haven't. Thank you so much, Chair Johnson. Good meeting, everybody. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it. Night, everyone.
Have a good night.